So, uh, feeling well, so he didn't come today. We'll go ahead and get started and try to work on through. Rodney primarily is gonna be taking most of our afternoons a day. We're gonna let him talk about three things at least that are important to his department and getting some matters maybe handled that are kind of impressing us a little bit. Rodney, I'll let you start with whichever issue that you wanna talk about first.
Uh, I'm talking to John Mobley from Digaway Construction this week and he had, he had sent back toward the end of December, uh, some invoices that, that they helped us do, helped us fix repairs on. And a couple, two or three months later, sent them again and not realizing that his emails wasn't getting sent out. His computer had something messed up with it and he had sent out emails for months that he didn't know that didn't get delivered. So, anyway, uh, I've got three invoices from him, repairs that they helped us do. One of them was dated back twelve one of nineteen. That's when they replaced a hundred and ten feet of the eighty sewer line that we had collapsed down here on National Avenue. And in that particular time, uh, they worked thirty-eight hours non-stop and we were right there with them the whole time, replacing the sewer line that had collapsed. And, and that was the, I guess, oldest thing was. The next one, we had a air release valve down here on our sewer line, down here in front of the health department, that rusted out and came apart and started pumping out sewer on top of the ground. And I had to call them to cause, we didn't have the parts to fix it with. They came up with the parts to fix it with and actually came in and worked till twelve forty-four in the morning, helping us get it fixed. So, that was another, the second invoice. The third one is when they replaced the manhole down here on National Avenue, the manhole that had collapsed down and crushed our pipe. So, that's just the three invoices that I had that they hadn't got paid for yet. And it's really nobody's fault but the fact that we didn't get the invoices through email.
Those would've been our bills payable in an orderly fashion, but they've all come to Rodney, bam bam bam, and he didn't realize that those were still outstanding till he received them finally.
What's the date on that?
First one was twelve one of nineteen, then, uh, twelve seven of nineteen, twelve fifteen, two fifteen of twenty twenty.
How could you not be, how could you not know?
Well, what he did, when he first sent them, not realizing they didn't send, he waited a couple of months and then sent them again, not realizing they still wouldn't be sent.
Well, if somebody owes me, they don't have to worry about getting them sent in a hurry.
Is that his common practice to send the bills email?
Yeah, yeah.
Just to you or, I mean...
To everybody that he...
No, I mean, are you the only person that gets the bills? Does he not have like two email addresses or...
No, they all come to my email address.
He usually just talks them up to Amy to put in our bills level.
Yeah, I turn, every invoice, I get ninety percent of our invoices come through the email. And as soon as I get them, I sign off on them and take them up to Amy and she probably puts them in the computer.
Well, it's certainly, it's certainly not your fault.
No, it's your, I mean...
I mean, that's strictly his fault.
Yeah.
And if somebody owes me, you're not gonna have to worry about, and he needs to be told that. That's how often, don't you how often, when do you pay the bills, all of them, when you get them like that? In a month, the first of the month?
Generally, less than a month and depending on what it is, I might pay it right then.
Well, that, he needs to know that, that if he's not paid by that time, that he needs to call or get another bill here too. That we don't wanna be getting bills six months, seven, well, we won't. But still, he needs to be told that, that you can't get them paid if he don't get you the bills, you know?
These, Rodney, Rodney wanted to make sure that when these, we're gonna need to pay this man and we owe him, and they really helped us out of tides in each situation that we had. And they're the kind of people who are accommodating, they come when we need them. He just didn't realize that his machinery wasn't delivering to us. And once he discovered it, he's went back and found the ones we helped pay him for and sent them to us. Because they were so old, I told Rodney, I thought we needed to discuss it in the meeting today because these are gonna date back into nineteen.
And I told him, you know, when I got the invoices date, y'all had already approved the bills for this month, you know, and they weren't included in with the ones y'all already approved. So, I mean, he's fine if he has to wait till next month, you know, to get them approved. And I told him I'd mention it today in the work session and try to wait and get them paid.
That don't make the city look good. I meant to other people, if they see that we owe them for that six, eight months later...
How much money we're talking about?
Well, one of them's, that, uh, hundred and ten feet of sewer line, they, they replaced, spent thirty-eight hours down there, it's like eighteen thousand. And then a thousand eight ninety-five down here on the air release valve. Fourteen thousand for the manhole replacement.
Thirty-four thousand dollars and they had sent, and... I would have, I, I, we're not gonna be, but if I were you, I'd have another, I'd have a talk with him if he didn't get paid within thirty days, know something's wrong. Don't come up here sending us no thirty-something thousand dollars worth of bills seven, eight months later.
We hate this happen, Rodney, when Rodney got bam bam bam, when the three delivered here and the old dates on them, I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't because we were holding the bills back, we just never did get them. And the guy didn't know his machinery wasn't working properly till he was made aware of it and then he looked back and saw why we hadn't paid him, we didn't ever get the bills.
I just can't believe that, anybody owes me that much money. They wouldn't have to worry about being sent again before they're gonna show a phone call. I think we all feel that way about it.
We've never had this happen before. It's the first time happening and I don't think it would occur again, but it, because it was a special circumstance, I said, Rodney, we, we might ought to talk about this and make sure the council understands that me and you are not the problem. It's the man never did deliver his bills to us, you know?
Sure it was their fault, if you...
We, we would've paid him timely, the work was performed and done in a wonderful order. I mean, they really helped us out in all these situations, but he just never did send us a bill. He thought he was sending a bill, but he, he wasn't getting it through to us.
That would put a fellow that's in business for himself in trouble.
And sometimes when, when we have an emergency like this, oh, we, we don't really have time for him to sit down and work up a quote, see how much it's gonna cost and all this stuff. We gotta get it repaired.
Yeah.
And I can call at two o'clock in the morning and they'll be here, you know?
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm sure.
If I need help.
He must've thought maybe that if we didn't have the money to pay it, he'll just let me go, but that's not...
We, uh, certainly have respect for his company, they do good work. It's just that these bills were unusual, how we received them and them that old and that kind of thing. But Rodney's got a lot more ground to cover. We'll put this in the bills to approve, uh, for the, but we wanted to make you aware of them.
Oh, second thing I had, oh, I had a sanitary survey done through A.D.M. this last week. And what they do on a sanitary survey, they can't, they come in and they inspect the plant, the tanks, the booster pump station, everything, every three years, they inspect everything. The only issue that she brought up to me this year was, uh, we're probably gonna have to have a couple, one or two tanks painted before the next three years. And, and what I, what I've got in mind to do, I've already talked with the mayor about it. I've talked with the people that, that painted our tank down here at Pikeville the last time. And they do what they call maintenance programs where you pay them so much a month or whatever and they keep all your tanks. They, they do a washout every year on the tanks, you know, wash them out, make sure their water's good and clean and that sort of stuff. And, and they'll schedule to paint like maybe one tank a year. And, and they come in and inspect them and take pictures of them and all that kind of stuff. This is something that A.D.M. recommends if you have more than three tanks. And we've got nine. So, they strongly recommend that, that you do a maintenance program to keep all of them and that way you keep them kinda on a rotation where they get checked and cleaned and washed out and that kind of stuff every so often.
Pikeville tanks, the last one we had maintained, is that correct? Painted, they did some pit repairs and painted. How much did that one cost us?
I wanna say close to seventy-eight thousand dollars, something like that, inside and out.
How much?
About seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Seventy-eight thou...
What was my water bill? Well, that was already paid for. What, what we got is if we paid them a maintenance contract and they presented for your approval, inspection or approval, if we approved it, then we wouldn't be hit by these big sums where we owe them. In other words, in that contract, they keep up all of our tanks, they look and see when it needs to be done, they, they keep it at a minimum because they do them on a timely rotation. And we think we need to look at a proposal for a maintenance contract. We may not approve it, we may decide to just still go one tank at a time and they'll pay for it, but we need to look and see what it, what a maintenance contract would look like monetarily to the city.
And this is something that I probably wanna start in my next budget. I'm not gonna, you know, just pull it all out right now. This is something that, that I'm in the work, that's in the works of looking at and getting some figures together, getting some numbers, how much a contract would be, maintenance contract.
Are you speaking now that this is for one tank, seventy thousand dollars?
Yeah.
For one tank? How long has it been since it's been cleaned or...
Probably fifteen, twenty years.
Well, how, how much are we spending each year? You say we got seven of them.
Got nine tanks.
Nine tanks? How many tanks are we having to have cleaned each year?
We don't, we haven't had any cleaned in the last few years, I mean, pretty much.
But you can take though if we had three of them cleaned ever, uh, what? Three of them cleaned ever? You're not going, you don't clean them every year?
No, no.
But you set them up on a basis of maybe five, six, seven years, three of them.
See, what, what, what they told me, if you do them like a maintenance contract, you do like a, you try to do it for like ten years.
Yeah.
And you just kinda rotate the tanks around, you know, washing them out, that kind of deal. You don't wash them out every year, but you kinda rotate everything out over a ten-year period.
Oh yeah, that's, oh yeah.
And it, it, you don't, you don't get hit with them seventy-eight thousand dollars at one point.
Do they inspect them fairly often?
Yeah, one of them once a year. Once a year they would inspect them.
And they'd find any kind of something that looked like it's fixing to happen or preventative?
Yeah, yeah, and all that would be included in that contract, in that maintenance contract.
And you pay them so much each year?
Yeah.
I think that's what your, of course, if you're gonna have anything to do with that.
Tell them what happens if you let your tanks get pitted?
Well, they have to go in and if, if the damage is ordered there, if the tanks are pitted on the inside, they have to go in and sandblast the inside of the tank and then weld the spots that are pitted. They have to actually take a welder inside the tank and weld up those spots that are pitted. And, and then of course they have to decontaminate all the inside of the tank and, and they sandblast the outside of the tank and paint it as well. And the, the paint that they use on those tanks are very expensive paint. It's, it's not just your regular Walmart, Walmart paint.
That, that, what was that, something, I never would've thought of that.
But I, I, the reason Rodney went to this trouble to, to call this man, he and I got to talking about how to budget for these tanks that need to be repainted. And he come back to me and he said, there's a company out here that's worked for us that offers a maintenance contract. I said, then they'll keep us under contract, then how much will our tanks cost when we have them painted? He said, it'll be in the contract, we won't pay them for painting those tanks, it'll be in those numbers that they give us in that ten-year maintenance contract.
That's what I'd do, I'd get a contract, so...
And, and we'd need to know how much it'll cost us a month.
Yeah.
Because, it don't seem reasonable.
You gotta figure it in on those water bills.
Yeah. But, uh, obviously the life of those tanks is our maintenance factor. I mean, that, that, they're still, they'll last a long time if you neglect them, but they last lots longer if you...
Take care of.
Maintain them.
We hang that need to piggy, how would...
Probably not at this point, but you don't wanna wait till they...
We don't get to that point.
No.
It's, it's extensive once they're pitted.
And that'd be something to drain the tank and have to go in it and sandblast and...
Once you've worked inside it, then you got your sanitizing effect, it's gotta happen too. All that's, everything's gotta be done to the nth degree to be sure that you...
What you drain it to do inside and out, it's, it's down for about two weeks.
I'd, I'd say Rodney, you need to get your program and get it down, get it down on paper, see how many, what you can afford each year, how many to do.
And that's where I wanna go ahead and, and get the ball rolling on it before the budget comes up, before we, you know, so we'll know what to put in for the budget.
And whoever comes in here next, you already have that down. It won't take a few minutes to explain to them about, well, what it's gonna cost each year.
Yeah.
And that's got to be figured into those water bills, there's no question.
Rodney, I'll take you all to proceed with getting the, the council quote to look at for a maintenance contract and then we'll decide whether or not to adopt one.
He said that he's gonna get back with me in a couple of weeks and send a guy, send a guy up here and they'll probably take some pictures. And what they'll do is go around to each tank and we'll name, I'll give them the names of all the tanks and, and they'll kinda rate them from bad to worse, or bad to good, you know? What, what needs to address first and then rate them out, all the tanks. That's, that's something we're gonna be looking at doing, I mean, just to get a proposal up and see what...
If you got nine of them, you'd like to get three each year, wouldn't you, probably? Or would you?
Well...
Well, you wouldn't have to do that if they lasted, it's quarter that long they last.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, and depend on condition they're in, I mean. The number one, number one teller of what kind of condition tanks is in if your, if your disinfection byproducts start going up. That's, and, and I explained to him, right now, our disinfection byproducts are great. We don't have that problem. So, that, that pretty much get, is an indicator that your tank's in pretty good shape, you know? Outside of them, a couple of them looking kinda rough and need painting.
Endless inspection, was there a, a lot of other specific issues that they pointed out that we need to address, Rodney, in the water system?
We got one booster pump station that, up there on top of Mitchell Hill, that, that needs some attention. It's, one of the pumps has got a little small leak on it. Of course, I've already got, had one guy to come in and look at it about preparing the pump. I haven't got any quotes yet, anything on that, but that's something I'm gonna have to address and outside of the building. But that, that station's been there for like forty, thirty, forty years and one of those pumps in there's never been touched. One of them had a, had a motor redone on it, but one of the pumps has never been touched, still running.
We know, it's just a matter of time.
Yeah.
Forty years.
That's the one that's leaking a little bit now, it's never been touched.
Getting ready and...
It's getting ready.
So, he knows that he's gotta face that before too long. So, that's, besides painting our tanks, those pumps will have to be addressed. He wants to get that one's leaking rebuilt and the other one checked to be sure it's doing its job. You mentioned that those pumps run a lot, is that correct?
Yeah, they, they, the water comes to town and splits and then part of the water goes to the Mitchell Hill tank and then there're booster pumps there to boost out to the Western tank. Booster pumps at McCrackens boost water out of the Western tank out to the Baggett tank at Bemidji Gardens. And then out of that tank, the county's pulling water out of that tank, so, I mean, yeah.
That's where they purchase their water from us.
I'm the place to share a part.
The tank on Baggett Hill there's, is where the county gets their water from us, kind of into the line for us. Okay, Rodney, we kinda see into that report and thank you for updating us on that and let's move on to your next, uh...
Last but not least, I've, I've put a copy in everybody's basket of the ordinance that Scott has adopted, has drafted up for the, for the grease ordinance. I'll just go over a few highlights in the ordinance, I don't wanna go over the whole thing 'cause it's ten pages long. One thing I wanted to highlight in the ordinance is, uh, on the second page at the top, uh, the ordinance shall apply to both new and existing facilities that generate fats, oils and grease and as a result of food manufacturing, processing, preparation, food service. These food facilities shall install, use and maintain proper grease interceptors that are required in section three of the ordinance. The facilities include but not are limited to restaurants, food manufacturers, food processors, hospitals, hotels and motels, prisons, nursing homes and any other facility preparing other one, or otherwise make food stuff available for consumption. So, what that's telling us is that's covering, uh, the new facilities and existing facilities. I just kinda went through and highlighted and...
If you would, tell the council and the newspaper why we decided we must have a grease ordinance.
Well...
Based on happenings that we've been having happen.
As y'all well know, we've had a lot of problems with grease in our, in our sewer system because, and I look, hey, I read some stuff this morning, uh, kind of statewide, they said over four hundred thousand sanitary sewer overflow, over half of it because of the grease. That's statewide, I mean, it's not just us having problems, it's, it's everybody. And that, that was the one thing Amy told us we had to do was adopt the grease on us, that's our interest.
We found out the hard way that water, sewer water will not flow in grease clogged sewer. And once it clogs, it clots and it's very expensive to get removed and dissolved. So, we've got to stop the infiltrous grease, that's why this ordinance is being looked at. Go ahead, Rodney, let me...
You know, y'all, y'all will have to read through all this on the page, the fourth page, it talks about the new facilities and existing facilities, uh, what they, they'll be expected to do.
Once this is adopted, how long do they have to get into compliance? Read it and I'll find out?
That's a good question, uh...
Well, since you've read it, I thought you might know. Cause it's got a say in here, once it's approved and adopted and I'm sure it has to run in the newspaper or they're gonna have to get a copy of it some way or another. When, how long do they have to become compliant?
Most of them should be compliant.
Yeah.
I'm the one guilty one, let me get mine fixed, you know? I wouldn't think the law's open to want to admit that they're the ones that's clogging their lives. But as far as giving them time to become compliant, I'm not sure, um, that... That's a prerequisite with us, you know, we, if someone is not complying with the rule now, that's why we're adopting the ordinance. We are gonna write a letter, we're gonna get Scott Hunter, attorney, to form us a letter to anyone that's got a grease trap and, and tell them that there's a new ordinance and that we'll expect them to allow inspections. We'll expect them to keep documentation of their pumpings, of their grease traps for inspections when we're there and we're gonna expect them to be in compliance at all times.
Yeah. I don't believe it, it gives a specific time to get, to let them get in compliance because, I mean...
Under the law, they're supposed to...
Under the law, they're supposed to be under compliance and, you know, you can't just turn and give them six months to get under compliance and let them dunk grease in there for six months.
So, how quick are you gonna start doing your inspections to make sure?
Quickly.
Let's go back to that one.
Quickly.
We will start inspections, in my viewpoint, thirty days after the first letter's sent out. I want, I want everyone to get a courtesy letter from our attorney or worded from our attorney, sent from the city, under my signature, that we have this ordinance and that we will be, uh, inspecting, uh, on surprise inspection. We don't wanna set a date. We want our inspector to work at his schedule whenever he wants to go inspect. We definitely, uh, want these people to be in compliance because right now they aren't, somebody is not. We've had various times that we've had this happen and they've gotten more frequent as, as time's gone on. Would that be a true statement, Rodney?
Yeah. And this ordinance was, was drafted by pretty much a model ordinance. We, we've gotten our found and, uh, that's, it, it, it basically covers everything for the, for the, for, for the city and, and the water sewer part.
And this will go before the city judge when, when a violation or if a violation is found? That's the way it's handled?
Well, if you if you read all of it.
Well, I mean, I hand read all over it. I'm back here to the schedules and the penalties. This is the first time I've seen it, so I mean.
Yeah.
Will you? Will you, what I'm asking is, do you have the authority to write the citation of violation? Or are you just gonna have to gather all the information and present it and then the judge will decide this?
Right, yeah.
That's my question.
The PTOW, which is a public public treatment works. If the PTOW determines that a generator is responsible for a blockage or collection system, then the generator shall owe a civil penalty, penalty of a thousand dollars for the first violation, fifteen hundred for the second violation, two thousand for the third violation within a two-year period. Continuous violation shall result in an increased penalty by five hundred dollars.
It could come down to a termination of service if it gets severe enough and we want that to be the last resort. All these matters like this that are to be in the future, of course, we'll make sure that we follow rule and procedure before we cite someone and we'll get advice from Scott.
We certainly hope we don't ever have to cite anybody.
We hope in adopting this and sending out courtesy letters going to fix our problem being able to inspect those grease traps should be a real deterrent to violations. We don't want to penalize the first person. We just want to stop the problem because when we have to order in these specialists to unplug our lines, it's costing us a mint. We are paying big money to get those lines unstopped. I think we've had to call them in at least three times under my administration.
Will the results of those inspections be handed off to like ADM or anything?
Oh, no. ADM does not, they they're the ones that told me they don't have any jurisdiction over what goes in our system.
We own it, so we.
We own the system. They have they have control of what comes out of our system.
We wanted their help in this.
Yeah.
We couldn't get it.
That was the first people I called when I wanted to start with this process.
I would say that people theirself will keep pretty close to how they're they'll have somebody checking it.
That's what we want.
Their maintenance people or.
I think they'll fix it on their calendar once they know we're gonna.
Right, they they'll keep up with it.
I believe it'll fix the problem.
Yeah. I mean, it it and it tells in this ordinance that any any facility that has one is is supposed to have documentation for five years getting it cleaned out, getting it checked, getting it cleaned out and that kind of stuff. And that's one of the things that we could, you know, we could look at when we go in. Can ask for their documentation, when it was cleaned out last and this kind of stuff. And I've looked today, there's a there's a tool that I can get about well over a hundred dollars that I can go in and put it down in a grease trap and pull a sample out of the grease trap of how deep the grease is in that trap.
Have you ever used it?
I haven't.
You've been practicing with it?
I'll do some practice before I start doing it yet. It's a simple thing. I mean, it's.
That'd be good. Yeah, that's what you have to have there.
A person out in the public came to me and said, I heard you had a grease problem in your in your sewer. He said, I was in a place and could hear a worker ask, what do I do with this vat of grease? And the supervisor said, pour it down that drain right there. And it would go directly into our sewer system. And that's a worker saying, what do I do with this vat of grease? And he was told to pour it in the sewer by management. So, you know, that don't that don't, that's why we need this. That's what's happening. That's why we got grease and we got problems with grease. We hate that we have this, I don't want to address this matter. This is not what I want to do today. But it's just that important to stop the bleeding, the money we're spending. And the people who are being affected. This last time, there was about thirty-five thousand in damages to these apartments down here. And we've had to file an insurance claim and it was fought. We finally got word today that our insurance company's coming through for us on this matter. They objected, said it was the the city's problem. And finally, the adjuster gave in today and let Rodney know that the claims are gonna be paid. Our agent was notified that this this claim's gonna be paid by insurance and student city. So we came up close to not only having a grease problem, we almost had to pay for the apartment damage we caused down here. Surpro did a total cleanup, replaced some cabinets, made some damaged furniture. One of them had eight or nine inches of sewer in the floor because of that backup. So that's why we're talking about an ordinance today and putting one together that we can somewhat enforce. ADM don't help us. We're having to help ourselves. We're the only, we own the sewer system, so we've got to police it. We're sorry that it's come down to policing for grease, but it has. Rodney, I appreciate all the work you've done on putting this together. Do you got any other comments or things for the council today?
I guess that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you for that. Tomorrow, Thursday, June the eleventh, we plan to open our water park. Rodney's been right in the mix of trying to help today to get a, we had a sensor go out over there on our sewer. We've got a little sewer station that pumps into the line from the bathrooms. The alarm went off this morning after they started getting everything prepared. They thought the sensor was going to delay our opening tomorrow, but they got it working and we are gonna have to put a sensor in, but it can be fixed after the fact. So we'll be opening our splash pad tomorrow.
I read that notice on Facebook, but I didn't understand. It said it will be limited to thirty people. Is that thirty total, including adults and children, or is it thirty children playing?
I think it's thirty actually playing. Because, you know, there may be more children, of course, with one parent or two, but I I think they're gonna go by the people that are actually in the in the water or on the playground equipment.
And and the adults have to remain six feet apart if they're not in the water?
I think they.
There are one family that don't have to. If they're if they all belong, if they're all Williamses and they're from that family, they can sit together. The Williams family can be here and the Smith family over here and they don't have to distance themselves. But they should distance around the pavilion if they're from different families. If they're windsets, they're one one windset is kind of.
Especially them winds that are tall.
Good question. That's social distancing is still an important thing. The COVID is spiking in some areas and we're we're concerned. We've got our disclaimers where that we're not responsible for COVID. If it's if if they say they got it at the water park, they're gonna sign a form saying that the city's not liable.
Are we checking temperatures?
Uh, yes. If they come with a temperature, we don't need a little man to play. Our recreation department will open for some private parties. The seniors are still not meeting. There's still no organized sports at our park. That'll come later, we hope. There's a cancellation, I think, of all summer youth programs, organized sports. So.
Private parties at the splash pad or private parties at the bank at the gym?
In the rec center, in the rec center. I don't know if it'll be in rooms or the gymnasium. Tim, Tim had got a a plan together for that and I didn't get the exact, I told him to be cautious with that. He informed me that he would be. And he said he would have to limit the numbers so they could have distancing and this kind of thing if it was required. And it will be required if they're from different families, you know, there'll be definitely a need for that. We've had some requests to have some peaceful protests in some of our parks. I've told some people this week that our park's still not open for the recreation parks. The track is open, the internal grass there. Peaceful protest, I understand is legal anywhere. So I've asked them to use the grass area. And if the pavilion's busy, you know, trying to up the headquarter at the pavilion. So I haven't had a tremendous request for this, but I've had one request. And we've already had one peaceful march, prayer and march over the.
So are you waiving the thirty-day permit?
The what?
The thirty-day permit. You have to make your request thirty days in advance and you and the mayor, even the chief have to, so you're waiving that?
Yeah, yeah, I have I have asked them to be permitted. I like, I appreciate the others didn't even notify me that we're having anything. They just said, we're having it. This lady came and and specifically said she'd like to, it was on her heart to put something together. And she'd been praying about it and declared it would be a prayer vigil. So I did not write her a permit on the spot. I just told her that our rec center was still closed down and our playground areas there were closed down. The only spot I knew in town that would be suitable would be around the track. And I said, there'll be people walking the track possibly when you're there, so just get in the grass if you can and and do it there. I said, if the pavilion's not busy and available, you know, that might be another area you could leave. But I did not write a permit. The numbers revenue, if you ever want to know about our sales revenue, April was three hundred thousand for the city and May was two hundred eighty-seven thousand for the city. March was two seventy-five, that's before the COVID. So actually our sales revenues for the two months that we've been shut down has been up. And our beer liquor generated monies were the highest ever in May, fifteen thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars. That's the most we've ever received from alcohol revenue in my tenure. I don't know if the kids were driving them. Occupational tax actually was up in May from above, it was down some from March, but back to ninety-seven thousand two hundred forty-six dollars in May. It was down in April to eighty-three thousand, so occupational tax has held up rather well. Considering all that we've been through, the numbers are looking very good and so I was pleased with that. We will give you a little bit of an update on our loss control division. We had a visit from them recently and the biggest issue that was pointed out was us not having a incentive safety program. We talked about that this morning, did we not Rodney?
We did.
With Angela. And at this point, you know, an incentive would be money, money, time off, some kind of Angela mentioned a pen to wear on your lapel for safety programs or something like that. Usually, if you have an incentive, somebody's gonna get a reward for for being good at what they do. Being most safety minded or something like that. So we don't have that program. That was one of the things they pointed out that we might want to look at. So we're now studying that a little closer now that's been pointed out. The thing that was really pointed out, that's been pointed out before and we've got Tim working on that now, was the handrails that go on our small bleachers, that's the little sports complexes. Of course, they're not being used right now, but before they're used again, we want those handrails on those bleachers. And Tim has reported to Angela that that's being addressed currently. And it should be not a problem. And I'd like for us to report to these people when we do get that corrected and the date it was done. But that was the largest neglectful item that was pointed out in here that I can remember. That's the one that had a picture by it. It asks if we've been to the skid driving. Our officers. Skid car driving. They want them to do that periodically and.
The officers do it, but they said it was open to to anybody else in the city that drives any type of.
I guess we could send our.
Anybody wants to go to skid car training, you know, it might be kind of fun. But it was open to everybody.
About the skid car training equivalency programs that's offered. Other than our police officers, I don't think we've sent any of our, the end of the utter ladies. Safety incentive program is what they call that and they ask us that we have one. And then they made a paragraph here about us not having a a specific safety incentive program in place. I think the only red mark that got a picture was that bleacher that didn't have a handrail.
Yeah, the bleachers and the incentive program. Only two things that we had to respond to on the on the report.
Okay. Rodney's our safety officer and he kind of looks at things like this. But pretty clean overall. There's the picture of our bleachers that they put in here and it's a little picture right here. And the little right up about it. And it was older bleachers is what it says and that weren't compliant with industry standards. All bleachers, I understand, now come with the rail on it to keep somebody. All bleachers, I understand, now come with the rail on it to keep somebody from falling off the back of it on their end probably or, or otherwise falling off the end of it. When I was a kid, we'd try to scoop the one on the end off the bleacher, as I remember it. Makes, and then act innocent when they hit the ground. But, uh, if you guys have anything you want to discuss, we'd be glad to discuss it. I, I ran out of materials for today. There was, uh, a, a piece in the paper this week concerning, uh, payment toward the jail from cities. And I'm glad we got all our matters settled because it seems to spark some uh, fire in, in a, in a council meeting where the mayor made that whole decision. I was glad we had the visit from the commissioner and made a joint decision about our, the help with the jail, our commitment is done. I'm real proud that we made that commitment early on and, and went on record with it. I want to thank y'all personally for taking care of that matter and, and letting the commission know where they stand as far as we're concerned about our. We, we want to help them when they go to that jail. And, and I understand the smaller cities and the lack of funds, sometimes, you know, you, you're hard pressed just to but meet your budget, let alone direct other monies to things. Um. We, we must be thankful and proud that we could help as much as we did on the D jail project. You got anything else, Angela, that you think we need to, uh, air today, talk about?
No, nothing I can think of.
Okay. Rodney, thank you for all the work you did and enlightening us about the possibility of having a maintenance contract other than a seventy-eight thousand dollar paint job for a tank. You know, that's to me, that's, that would be a good thing if it's a reasonable amount that we could do the maintenance on our, our tanks and system. If you will follow through on that pump that's leaking.
Yeah.
And before it burns up, let's try to get that maintained as best we can. Rodney don't really like to put Band-Aids on things. He likes to fix them right when he fixes them and I appreciate Rodney's leadership in his department and taking the front on a lot of issues. He understands more about this grease issue than I've ever understood and he actually understood all the products that could make up the, the issue. He, he explained to me a lot about it and, and I get some sort of visual on what he was telling me, but anyway, he's over my head in some of that stuff. Rodney's been around the operation of water treatment plant enough to understand what chemical does and changing over your chemical has been proven to be successful. Is that correct, Rodney?
Yeah, indeed, yes.
In the water treatment process, much cleaner as far as, uh, the mess you make every day and that kind of thing and still get the job done?
Water quality's actually better than it was.
When we first changed over, the guys had to get used to those floods we have on the river that put all that mud in the water. And they were having to figure out the formulas that went with the mud. How much, how much water did, back, backwashing did y'all do there, Rodney, for a period of time?
It was a lot.
It almost panicked a couple of times. It's like, man, then we, we've had it with this last flood, that muddy water.
We pumped the waste at one time, almost twenty-four hours.
Oh.
Popping it on, in the, in the ground. It's ended up consistent.
As the guys have learned the new chemical makeup and how it works in muddy water, it's got much easier.
A whole lot easier now.
For them to deal with.
What's the timeframe on the ordinance? Like when will it come to a vote?
Well, we've, I, I think we're getting all clear from our attorney. Um, we'll bring it up pretty quick. Um, he kind of, he modeled this and, uh, we'll see if he thinks we need to tweak it anymore. I want him to address Tammy's question about the timing as, as far as enforcement and notification, that period. I want him to be helping us to set that time that's reasonable for everybody. I don't want to ever be unreasonable in any of these matters. And I thought her question was a good question. So we're going to go back and explore that a little more before we ask them to vote on it. Anytime we have a, a discussion like this, a lot of good things come out of the discussion that maybe uh, had not been, that's why we wanted everybody to talk about it today. If any of you guys read through it and have any other questions or things that you think will need to tweak or add, then tell us, know.
But we could possibly have the greatest ordinance, maybe not. Is that right? At the next council meeting?
We'll, we'll, we'll see if we have to, uh, make any adjustments in it. If we don't, we'll probably vote on it. Because we, we need to get it in place where we can send the letters out and notify all the grease producers. Um, everybody that's got a grease trap needs to know this ordinance exists before we start inspections.
I think, I just got it, was it Monday? Where I got it?
Yeah, we, we, we just got our hands on it. Rodney put it in everybody's box as soon as he got it.
So you could read it.
But I don't think we'll solve this until we put it in force. I really don't. I, I think we've got to go ahead with it. If the ball's rolling in the right direction, we want to make sure that we hit a home run with this.
If y'all read through it and, and have a question or comment, please let me know or if there's something we need to look at changing or whatever, let me know. We can.
Okay. With that being said, we'll, uh, it's time to adjourn. We appreciate the forty-nine news and the, and the journal record being here today with us. Thank y'all very much.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.